Congratulations to the five United States of America and to the government of the court of justice sentences, one nation under God, founded with everything and justice for all.
Roll call please, Pam.
Mayor Gorminter.
Here.
Alderman Caldwell, Alderman Couch, Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers, Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rosika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approve the agenda.
Who do approve with the revision?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For any of you that might have seen the original agenda, not the revised one, we just added a resolution for employees of the city as it relates to the housing authorities. Okay, personal appearances, Robert Browning, 498 Merchant Street would like to address the mayor and the board of aldermen concerning pit bull problems. And if, when Mr. Browning's done, I take it there's probably some other people, since we're on that subject, even though you're not specifically named here, since we're on that subject, if anybody else would like to make comments about that, certainly we'll listen to them at that time. So, if we could, just, if there's a lot of people who want to talk, just try to be to the point, and if you would, and-
Address the board.
Address the board, and we'll certainly, more than happy to listen to you. So, Mr. Browning?
Bob Browning, 498 Merchant Street. Unfortunately, I'm here because of a recent tackle on our mail lady from a vicious pit bull. This pit bull, I have called time and time, and time again, for a year on this dog. It gets out, chases people, tried to go through my glass window to get to my little three-and-a-half-pound dog, stalked my whole house around it one night after a snowstorm, and officer came out and seen the dog run up the hill. And if you could look all my calls, probably ninety-nine percent, I said, mark my words, this dog is going to kill somebody or maul somebody. One hour before it got our mail lady, I called, because the son of a bitch, excuse me, chased me while I was unlocking the gate, chased another lady, and I called, I said, get somebody out here. I said, this dog is going to maul or kill somebody. And all later, Nancy's walking down the street, and she's looking out, and the dog ran over, kicked her like this, pulled her down, the dog would have killed her, got up there, broke it up, got hers in my house, she had, her throat was eighteen inches of blood going like this. And if it was a kid, or somebody wouldn't have been out there, she'd be dead. And there's been probably thirty calls on that dog. And unfortunately, it's always me calling, nobody else gives them, but they're saying it's her fault. Yeah, the people, the owners of the dog says it's her fault. The dog had a nightmare, she disturbed it. Look on that, what's happening now in St. Genevieve, these people are dogging her. And something has to be done. Now, there is, I'd like to pass this around, there's some pictures, and just, when you look at those, it could be, you know, a family member. There is laws on the books now, that any dog that shows an act of aggression or violence at all times, has to have a red collar on it, muzzled, if it's in their house, muzzled, red collar, and in a cage. If it's outdoors, muzzle, red collar, caged, and tethered. So, we can eliminate a lot of this crap by enforcing those laws, and not just letting these people have the dog and kill somebody. We're responsible for this, because we're letting it happen. You guys got to step up to the plate, I respectfully, am I boring you?
Me?
Yeah, yeah.
No, not at all, I have something to say.
I respectfully, before I leave here tonight, somebody on this board says, hey, look, let's sit down and see what we can do about this.
And that's what I was getting at.
Because this is gotten out of hand, out of hand, and here you've got a lady paying for it, and another lady, I've been here not too long ago, and this dog I know was reported numerous times, so nobody can say, well, we didn't, we weren't aware. But, so, can I have some feedback from you guys, please?
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you, Mr. Browning.
Let's, let's sit down and try to come up with some-
I, I think that's where we're, we're going to listen to everybody's comments, and make some kind of decision of-
And please let me be a part of it.
And as you've said, there are already laws on the books, so it's not a kind of where we need more laws.
No, we just enforce the law we got.
I can attest to what you're talking about, and I've had incidents where I was walking on the street, and evil dogs charge out of their yard, you know, it's, it's owner responsibility.
But that's the problem.
And unfortunately, it's very difficult to do anything with, now, it's my understanding that, no, just a second, that that animal was put down, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All right. Now, the chief showed great restraint, but that dog kept charging for probably a good hour.
Yeah.
And finally, we had to take care of it.
Right. What, if anything, has the owner done in this?
Oh, I think, as of eleven forty-five this morning, I was threatened if I showed up down here, I was going to get shot. That's her fault, from walking down the street.
Have you told the police?
Oh, yeah, I mean, police-
Get off of that, let's go.
All right, let's go on.
Yeah, yeah, forget about me, right.
So, we've got-
My mind is down somewhere, it's not in my mind.
After everybody's comments, I'm going to ask Mr. Elpers and Mr. Toma to go through what laws that we have, and what laws, state laws, that are out there, and then-
And that's what I was going to say, is there any way that we can, you know, I, I don't know how you distinguish a dog that's violent and not violent, you know?
I think there's, we have some guidelines that will go, that are on the books right now.
Can I answer that for you? You know, when a dog is constantly charging people, growling at them, snarling their teeth, getting out, and nobody can catch them, I think that would call it under an aggressive dog, well.
Well, we'll go through that, let's listen to everybody's comments, and then we'll go. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I think most of you know who I am.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Kevin Beckett. Nancy is my wife, she's been carrying mail in this town for twenty years. This has been a problem for years. We have a leash law, we don't enforce it. I seen a guy walking his dog down Market Street the other day, called Bennett, told him, no leash. Rachel was attacked, my wife was attacked, there's a guy that walks around town almost daily, carries a billy club. I know every officer in this town has had to seen him walking around town with a club. It's not to beat people up, it's to beat dogs up. I have, I work with the guy, he rides his bicycle to the river every morning, she's out running dogs almost every morning, chasing them. There is a hole in our system, it's not working. My wife's been bit twice, Bennett's been to the hospital two times with her, she's been twice, bit twice on record, she's been bit more times than that. It's you guys' problem in this town to enforce the laws. I believe there's a five hundred dollar fine, max penalty. How many tickets have been given out in the last three years? And how many was dropped? I want that number, that's public record. How many did you excuse?
I don't recall excusing any.
How many was fifty bucks, instead of five?
I don't know, that would normally be up to the judge.
When a guy calls in and says a dog's loose, and the deputy dog guy comes by and does a drive-by, and doesn't see a dog, and leaves, he, he knows what dog it is, because he's had multiple problems with him. Didn't do nothing, he drove off. Ten, twenty minutes later, my wife gets attacked. Then, the deputy dog guy shows up, and some city police, and they corner the dog. The dog attacks the cop, he gets shot, that's cool. Why doesn't the deputy, the dog gets shot, because they're waiting for the vet to show up with a dart gun, to tranquilize the dog. Why wouldn't our guy, that is his job, why wouldn't he have his own tranquilizer gun? That's what I'm doing.
I have no answer to that whatsoever.
Multiple officers-
No answer to that whatsoever.
Multiple officers. The problem is in this room, not pressing, not carrying through with the charges, dropping charges, not fining.
There's a history of, of that in regards to dangerous animals?
In general, I believe.
Well, I mean, you're talking about dangerous animals, right?
No, I'm talking about in general, dropping charges.
We're talking about dogs. Your point is about dangerous animals, so, just, yeah.
So, I'll stay with that. People, there's a leash law. There's a guy that walks his two dogs daily.
Saws them today.
Throws his ball and frisbee, and we allow him to do that, every day. Might have the nicest dogs on the face of earth, but we don't know that.
Doesn't matter, does it?
That's right.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So, how do we fix the hole?
Something needs to be done, absolutely. No argument from me. All right, Kevin?
Absolutely.
I'd like to leave off, I'm Jason Wyler, by the way, my wife is Rachel, she was the other one that got bit. Leave off where Kevin did. I would like to know the numbers as well, of the fines that have been given out to dogs that have been loose, have been turned in, because I, I agree with Kevin, I don't think, I think that if, if tickets were issued, then, I don't know, I was always told when I was little, you know, twenty-one times, you do something twenty-one times in a row, it creates a habit. Well, if you issue a ticket enough times, they're going to keep their dog locked up, okay? I am a dog lover. Y'all were talking about vicious dogs. A Chihuahua could be vicious, in my eyes, okay? I don't care if it's a pit bull, or if it's a rottweiler, or if it's a Chihuahua, or whatever. Again, I, I love dogs, I have one of my own, it bit someone not that long ago, because it was protecting its property. But if there are laws in town, my wife does not even want to go near a house and deliver mail. Okay, so if you guys live on the city route and you have a dog, I would bypass your house in a heartbeat.
Me too.
Because that's what he told her to do.
Okay, let me ask you, what'd you do to the dog after it bit someone? What'd you do with it?
What did I do with it?
Yeah.
With my dog?
Yeah.
Um, it was reported, but I live in the county.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I don't live in the city. So, my, my point, like I was telling Rachel, I would like to know, you know, I don't know how long the law has been, you know, you say that dogs have to be registered? I would hate to imagine how many dogs are in the city of St. Genevieve, but I would venture to say, three-quarters of them aren't registered.
No.
I'm just saying.
Well, that's a number we can't-
Right, I, I understand that.
But I agree that there's probably a heck of a lot of them.
Sure.
Somewhere that number is.
But you know, we-
I, I agree with everything you guys, I apologize, I came in late. The city, this board, needs to do everything in its power legally, to try to prevent these reoccurrences, on the front end of dog ownership, on the back end. And, and the argument, well, it's not the dogs, it's the dog owners. Listen, I like pit bulls. I, if it was, if I was the king, I wouldn't allow pit bulls in our city. I got a Doberman in my house, but I wouldn't want somebody else deciding that I couldn't have my Doberman.
Sure.
So, the gov, first of all, we can't do that, right? That's illegal. We can, we can say no pit bulls?
Yeah.
All right, I thought somebody told me that, that was not appropriate. Whatever we can do on the front end, and the back end, we got to do it, and we got to do it right now.
Well, I, I agree with what this gentleman said, though, any dog, even a dog that is seemingly docile, and it's happy in its surroundings, instinctively, if there's an intruder, you don't know what's going to set it off. And I love dogs too, I've had them, so I'm not, I'm not beating against dogs, but-
My, my dog's job is if there's an intruder, is to eat that intruder up.
That's another problem in this town. There's a reason why there's some dogs in some houses, okay? And I'm not, I'm not going any further than that.
Well, you got to, when you say stuff, you got to actually say it.
Well, I, I know, but there's a reason why people have vicious dogs at their house. What those reasons are, I, I don't know.
My vicious Doberman's fourteen years old, and she barks when somebody pulls in the driveway, she goes back down. Right? So, the government has no reason, I don't think the government should be able to come into my house-
I agree with that.
-and tell me what kind of pet I'm going to have. Now, if society has determined that this breed of dog, and I'm telling you, I'd outlaw pit bulls in a heartbeat, is dangerous, we know it's dangerous, it's bred to be dangerous, but then, the Chihuahua, that's got a bad attitude, is dangerous, it's, that part of it, I think it's going to be tough, but I think that the, that Martin will be able, and our city attorney will be able to guide us into the right ordinance.
But if said dog has had thirty complaints called in on it, he's not doing nothing.
Did you know there was thirty complaints called in on this dog?
I don't see a molester taking this route.
I'm, I'm just repeating what-
Yeah, but I mean, I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you, but make sure you know who's really not, not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
The key, the key element here, though, is your dog is kept indoors, it's behind a locked door, okay? The animals need to be restrained, they either have to be on a leash, I'm against chaining up animals-
We already have-
That's my point.
These regulations?
They're already there.
Yeah.
We just need to enforce them.
Well, we need to enforce them, and I certainly hope we take a look at, I'm just telling you, if I was the king, I would be a footballer in St. Genevieve.
You know, all cities-
And I know people love them.
Sorry. All, all cities need, all cities need income, and this sounds to me like extra income, if a dog is not-
No, no, no.
If a dog isn't leased up, why can't you give them a ticket?
No, because it's illegal.
Well, we don't do it for income, we just do it for public safety, I agree with you.
You understand what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you.
That is, that is going to be on their, they're not going to want to pay fifty dollars every time their dog's been tied, and you're going to get your mail, okay?
Yeah.
I just want to outlaw dogs completely.
John Stupi, nine hundred Market. I can't sit here and listen to it any longer. You're probably right, there probably was thirty somers as issued. I sit in court, they probably all got thrown out. That's what our problem is, you can pass all the ordinances you want, it's our court system.
Mr. Stupi?
Yeah, go ahead.
You said you've sat in court, probably thirty of them, and most of them got thrown out, that's not good enough. If you want to use statistics, you have to use real statistics, so-
Well, why don't you just come to court and sit alongside of me and watch what goes on in court?
I don't have to go to court.
I need to start sending you a check every month, for entertainment, because that's entertainment for me sitting there, listening to them.
Or, are you, you have something to say about the dogs?
Yeah. In, in all the years I was in Alderman, I had one person on my can, my wife, she runs every night, and she agrees with the mail carriers, there's time to do something about it. Like I told, what, Mary, what can I do about it? Our court system has to change.
Can I be a little bit of a smartass?
Yeah.
How many times did you bring it up when you were-
What good would it do, Mayor? What good would it do? We got to, first off, we got to separate the city attorney and the prosecutor, it's got to change.
We're not, we're not here to talk about that, and I'm sorry I made that comment, but we're here to talk about dogs, so-
I would like to see an ordinance, so after the first running with a dog, they need to submit a, an insurance policy, that they have insurance on their dog.
Well, we're going to talk about what laws we have, and what state laws they are after my next comment.
And follow through with it when-
Okay, we, we, you'll hear what we got, as far as what's on an ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yes, it'll be my turn. I'm Tom Hart, I'm the postmaster, for those who haven't met me. I do have just a few statistics for you guys. One, in fiscal year thirteen, this is the western area, just a certain area in the post office, we had nine hundred and seventy-six dog bites or attacks. According to the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, the average medical cost for a dog bite and attack in the United States is eighteen thousand dollars per patient. Each year, four point seven million people are bitten by dogs, eight hundred thousand Americans seek medical attention for dog bites, and half of these are children. Of those injured, three hundred eighty-six thousand require treatment in an emergency department, and about sixteen a year are fatalities. Dog bites relate injuries are the highest among children five to nine years old. So, if you have a kid in that age, or, think about that, if you don't think about anybody else. A couple things that I'll go over, one, there is a little bit of a difference between a dog attack and a dog bite, both of these guys, I feel like were attacked, it wasn't a dog running up and nipping you on the hill. So, we have went out, Craig is supervisor at the post office, we went out, we talked to the chief, we talked to the sheriff, and we've talked to the prosecutor, and we appreciate the input they got us, and told us, you know, kind of give us some guidelines of what they could do and what we could do, because we want to be more proactive than be reactive. So, sometimes all of our hands are tied certain ways. Couple things that I want everybody to be aware of, is all these costs that I talked about a little earlier, those are passed on to the homeowner, the dog owner, whoever's caring for the dog at the time. The post office, we don't sue for extra money, but we will sue for the money that it cost us. If we have an employee that's out, they're going to come after the people for that. So, they, they know that, we will do that. Lawsuits, if the carriers want to sue them, we don't stop them, that's fine with us, we don't get involved in that part of it. We just want the money that it costs us as a, as a company. One thing I heard everybody talk about, and that we had gotten some of the meetings that we had, is the fines, and, and that might help something. I know if, if I can drive a hundred down the highway and pay fifty dollars, probably going to take my chances. If I'm going to pay five hundred, probably not, you know? So, I think the stiffer the fines, that would get around a little bit more, you know, it just kind of travels. Just like this dog bite, when I called down here and talked to somebody, I said, do you know about the dog bite? And they go, yeah, and everybody knows about the dog bite. So, we're a small enough town that everybody's aware of it, same thing would happen if you got to fart out five hundred dollars. So, I think that would be maybe a good deterrent. And, and something I jotted down always here, all dogs, I have to agree, all dogs pose a threat to us, whether it's a pit bull that's going to bite you, or a small dog that's nipping at you as you're walking down the steps and you're trying to get away from, or you trip over the leash, and they're chasing you, and they got tied around them, and you fall. That's another type of injury, all caused by a dog that should be put somewhere else. We've had two dog bites in three months, both of them were pretty bad, all dog bites are bad, but they're, these were really bad. And I do, I want to give you some more information, we, we do have certain policies and guidelines that we can go by, and that's where we're going to go now. We pushed it a little bit, but now we're going to push it real hard. And what we can do, if you have a dog out, you're going to get a letter, and if you have it out again, you're going to get another letter, you're going to come in, you're going to sign, saying that you're going to be responsible and keep it put up. We're going to hold your mail each time, we're going to give it to you. If we give you three, you're not going to get your mail anymore. And if it's a vicious attack like these, you're not going to get your mail from the first, you're not going to get that first letter, you're not going to get your mail, period. We have to protect our carriers. And today, and what we did in this neighborhood, because we went up, Craig and I went up, talked to the dog owner, he had no remorse, he showed duck. I never heard sorry, I never heard how's the carrier, never heard any of that. With that said, from what I gather, he's got another dog there, that neigh, that block of the neighborhood does not give mail delivery. They've got ten days to put up a box on the curb, and we will drive up to them and deliver them. Or they can get a P.O. box, that's their choices, or we'll send our mail back. I've talked to most everybody on that block, and I haven't had anybody complain to me about that yet. You know, it's not, we, we don't want to be the bad guy, or we just want to deliver your mail and go home, but we have the right to do that safely, you know? And we will do what is ever necessary to protect the, the carriers, we have to do that. We, these people don't deserve this, so, that's pretty much all I have to say. If anybody's got any questions, you can come by the office and talk to me or Craig anytime, and we'll do whatever we can. We also don't want to see mailboxes on every curbside delivery on the whole town, probably don't want that, you know? One last thing, you know, that was probably one of your biggest weekends here in town, that dog was two blocks away from being downtown. What would that do for tourism, if that dog came downtown and attacked a small child? You know, just keep that in mind. So, keep us in mind, keep the carriers in mind, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
How do you guys are going to talk about, no, I'm sorry, Craig Slate, I'm the delivery supervisor, I'm the one that usually goes out whenever something bad happens, it's my job to take care of the carriers roaming the street, love you guys. All right, so, once you guys talk about the rules and the ordinances and the laws that we currently have, would it be okay if I asked a question or two after that? Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to apologize to Nancy, I know that she's, and Rachel, I know that they've both had to endure quite a bit. Ultimately, the buck's got to stop somewhere, it's our responsibility to ticket the, the dogs, or the, the dog's owners, and, and I know that, at some point, somebody needs to take responsibility, not every ticket, not every time that we've got a complaint on, on the dogs that Bob has called about has gotten a ticket, so it's not entirely Frank's fault. I mean, ultimately, it's the fault of, of the dog owner. I have a dog, my dog has gotten away, I had an invisible fence, he decided that he was stronger than the invisible fence and would run through it, now he's on a chain, you know? Ultimately, it's the dog owner's responsibility to take care of the dog. These are, in my opinion, mostly reactive crimes. We can't go ticket somebody for a dog at large until their dog is at large. You know, we've talked in, in meetings, about just trying to raise awareness, and, and the only thing that, that I see that we can do proactively is inform the community. One, about the severity, not only legally, but, but just criminally or, or civilly, when, when their dog does attack somebody, you know, it's, it's not only the financial aspect, but just the emotional aspect, what these people have to endure after they're attacked by an animal. Like I said, I know our ordinance says that, that you can't have a dog roaming with, that's not on a leash.
Does it say on a leash, or?
It says it, it's not, it says it's not allowed to roam off of a leash. The issue that I, that I have, I've seen the gentleman downtown with the two dogs, I would question the, the word roaming on that, personally.
Listen, somebody walking down the street with a dog on a, on a leash should get cited, shouldn't they? That's what the, our regulation says, right?
Without a leash.
Without a leash. So, that guy, I don't know who he is, I seen him too, saw him today, two dogs, it's roaming around. Yeah, he should get a ticket. I mean, if we're going to get serious about this sort of thing, we've got to get serious about it.
Well, and, and I guess that's the, the question that I wanted to bring up, as far as, as far as the philosophy on that. I mean, this, I'm not going to go to bat for the guy, but I, I don't know that his dogs are roaming, I mean, they, they are more under control than most people's kids.
Listen, they're three feet away from him, and they appear to be good dogs, well behaved, but that doesn't matter that they're just gonna take off. If the, is the same roo, roaming, are our orders...
It says roaming. It says they're not allowed to roam.
See, you know, what the hell is roaming? If it's not on a leash, give it a ticket.
That's the issue that, that I think that we need to bring up.
Once again, people get this line, and how do we divide this line, you know? Good dogs, bad dogs, I, I don't know. We can't make those assumptions.
I don't know.
We just can't make those assumptions. So the law is the law.
Would tend to imply that there's no owner, that the dog is just running loose. That's my interpretation. I am not saying that that's...
Correct.
Right.
So in the instance, on Fifth Street, there's no owner or even a home. The dog has gotten away. When the family member got there, and I won't go into specifics, but she said, "Oh yeah, it typically gets out over there." Well, if you know where the problem is, then it's their responsibility to fix that problem.
Guilty, guilty, guilty. That's a ticket.
But ultimately, like I said, I, I understand that the buck has to stop somewhere. It's my officer's responsibility, I'm the department head, uh, to, to, to bring those items and those, those cases to the court. I will ensure that my guys are way more vigilant on, on those tickets. To, to clarify something, we don't have an animal control in the city. Uh, the county has passed a, a animal sales tax, a law enforcement sales tax that included, uh, an animal control officer. They have the facility, they have the equipment, they have the vehicles to transport the animals. We don't. Uh, we will, just like we did in this, we will respond and, and try to assist however we can getting, getting an animal. Uh, but we don't have the equipment to transport, and, and the citizens of the town have paid a tax to allow for somebody to be able to do that, and the sheriff's department is the, the recipient of that tax money. Um, I can tell you that, that we will respond and have responded to, to every call that's ever been generated pertaining to an animal at large, and we certainly make every reasonable attempt to contact the owner or, or locate the animal or locate the animal's owner. And, and we will continue to do that and will be more vigilant in, in issuing the summons for the animal at large.
Eric, I just think, um, for the entire city staff, from the street department guys to you and your guys to, to us at this board, this should be the highest priority. Uh, I don't know when the last time was that somebody got viciously attacked by a dog, or how many times it's happened the last ten years, doesn't matter. It's happened twice, it's, it's left people severely injured. And, and we, we just, so the, the job of the Board of Aldermen and every city employee, the first job is public safety. Like the guy that walks his dog, I mean, he might be a great guy, might have the greatest dogs in the world, greatest leases on those dogs, I'd love to see him getting, uh, ticketed and, and not just, not just brushed on the hand. You know, we, we, there's a problem. We gotta tighten up on this problem real fast, and I know your guys will at your direction, and, um, I just hate, I just, this can't just be a problem tonight and go away. We gotta get something done.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm not a fan of passing the buck, but we're limited...
Oh, I see.
In what we can do to issuing a ticket. And on the, so, the first incident, let me finish that thought. On the first incident, that owner was issued several tickets for his animal. Paid his fine, I'm not saying that it was not prosecuted accurately or, or appropriately, but chose to not continue to, to maintain his animal.
But just, just, uh, Frank, you may not wanna answer this, and I respect that. If a dog isn't on a leash, is that breaking our ordinance and can the, can the dog owner be cited?
Yes.
Got that?
I, I've never questioned that.
Well, I, no, I was just asking, we got the guy that roams around two dogs on a leash, and you're going, "Well, I don't know about that."
It says it's roaming. I, I don't know that, that...
I just said, I just said to his proxy attorney, "If a dog is not on a leash walking with its owner, should that be cited?" And he said, "Yes."
Oh, and you said can't be cited?
Can be cited.
And I guess he's interpreting how he does.
Well, that's fine, if, if we hadn't had a dog biting your body for ten years, we could interpret it that way. I think right now, we have an obligation to the general public to help dog owners understand, 'cause they're gonna talk to each other, "Hey, they're cracking down on this, you better make sure you have all this stuff done."
Could we all, could we also do something where, like this last incident, where, okay, so the dog was aggressive, it brutally attacked somebody, it gets put down, and immediately that individual gets the same kind of dog and we get the same... Is there any way we can say, "Okay, you're not getting another one of those"? Is there any way...
Yeah, we could do that, we could not issue, we could not issue a dog license.
But they, they didn't have a license, they don't...
Well, see, therein lies the problem, they don't have a permit for it.
Yeah, we do, you're supposed to have one.
Correct.
And I'm not, I'm not throwing that on you.
All right, right, I, I understand.
Is that important? One of the holes is that you gotta hire somebody to go around and knock on doors.
Yeah.
And, and I certainly don't mean to, to be argumentative. If you want a ticket written to the guy with the two dogs, we'll write a ticket to the two dogs.
I wanna write a ticket to the guy with two dogs, I wanna write a ticket to the guy with one dog. I wanna write a ticket to tourists walking through town with their dogs loose. I just think we need to make a real hard stand in lieu of recent attacks.
Is, is the situations like we had here where, where animal owners are aware of, of the weaknesses in their, in their system for controlling their dog and, and disregard that.
Yeah, responsible pet owners aren't gonna be affected by anything that we do.
Right.
Right? 'Cause they're just gonna do it, they're responsible pet owners. Irresponsible pet owners are the ones we've gotta go after. And the guy walking down the street with two dogs roaming, to me, is very, I would never... My dog is incredibly well-trained. I would never walk down the street without her on a leash. I just wouldn't do it. For her own safety and for the safety of others. I don't think she would ever bite anybody. How do I know a forty-year-old kid that'd come up, stick his hand out, and she'd bite someone?
Right.
You know, so I'm, I'm very...
Again, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you on, on that fact.
I know, we just, let's, we gotta turn the heat up somehow, and we gotta, we gotta get our, review our ordinance that we have, tighten it up, make it front and back heavy, and we gotta start doing enforcement and prosecution.
And we have, we have members of media that are recording this and documenting this, and I think that it needs to be the headline that they're required to have a city license and that they're required to, to take the, the necessary precautions to make their animal safe. I think that that is the proactive stance that we can take on this.
Maybe we could somehow get some PSAs on some, you know, like a local... I know, I'm just saying, in addition to, because there may be people who don't grasp it. Eric, that's excuse. The comment was made a little bit earlier about, do you have the ability to, as far as tranquilize a dog or do...
Okay, I, I did wanna touch on that.
Okay.
We don't, again, we don't do the animal control, the county has the animal control. My understanding is they don't have the tranquilizer equipment, and they'll, they'll never have the tranquilizer equipment. Uh, that there are vets in town that, that they contract with to come out and take care of that service.
Control substance.
Correct, and the shelf life and...
bureaucracy you have to deal with.
Correct.
Have to do that, so...
But again, that's not gonna be, in my opinion, on the, on the city's shoulders. Um, I mean, the tax goes to the sheriff's department, and they have a system in place. It just, it did not work for that day. But the result was, was, I think, as successful as it could have been there without the use of a tranquilizer, unfortunately.
Sure.
Well, it could be a school kid, it could be a city worker, a policeman.
It could be anybody, and it's, and certainly, again, from the police department standpoint, you know, we apologize to the carriers that have been affected, and, and, you know, it's certainly our priority.
And just our general citizenry needs to be able to walk down the sidewalk without fear...
Absolutely.
Of, of anything, especially something like that, that can be controlled.
So, okay.
Well, I walk a lot myself there, and I stop in my tracks many a time there, and they either had me or...
And, and again, for people that are listening, if you see that, give us a call. There's probably a lot of times that we don't get called on it, and you may take a different route or, or an alternate way to walk, just because you don't wanna deal with the dog, but let us know so that we can, so that we can handle it on, on our end, so, thank you.
Is the animal control officer, is he available by four to five?
Their, their equipment is, if the officer himself is not on, other deputies can, can get the equipment to, to go point four hours a day. I know that he works pretty flexible hours to try to be available when the highest need is.
Is that still Deputy Barton, still running that?
Yes, yes.
He's a good guy.
And took that long, that Saturday morning, because maybe it was the weekend or...
Well, one of the, one of the vets was not available to come out. The other vet was on a call somewhere out in the county and had to come in. And, and, I mean, it just wasn't the, the most ideal circumstances.
So if somebody calls 911, they'll tell them to call...
Well, it's the same, it's the same facility, so they, they will automatically dispatch the appropriate animal control officer. And, you know, in, in cases that we can, I've, I've responded to, to many of these and, uh, have had a few of the dogs come at me and, and had to use force myself. So I certainly understand the, the severity of the situation.
When that call comes out, it don't only go to the animal control, it goes to you guys.
Sometimes, sometimes they, they will just dispatch Deputy Barton directly, and unless we're standing, we won't hear that. When he's on duty.
Anybody else comment?
I have a couple more minutes.
Um, if, if everybody else is, if everybody else is...
I just wanted to answer the question on roaming. The department guy that called said, "A dog is considered roaming when it's not under the direct care and control of the owner or handler by a restraint, leash, chain, roam." If they're not on that, you're roaming.
That makes sense.
Kevin? Kevin?
I do wanna bring up the fact that, uh, the dog that bit my wife was known to be a problem dog. It didn't have shots, it didn't have a city license. I doubt they have homeowners, but I don't know that, so I'll just leave that alone. If there's dogs, if there's an officer driving down the road and he sees a dog, does he have the right to record that address or stop and say, "Does that dog have a license"? Because the license is how you track the shots, is, am I right or wrong? Well, the dog, it meant a shot. They had to send its head off to make sure that my wife didn't have rabies.
Same as my wife, yeah, so you know.
Because it didn't have anything. And the, the ironic part about all this is, the dog that bit Rachel was owned by a city worker.
How's that ironic? I, I mean, our city employees don't know every ordinance on our books. I'm not taking up for anybody, but I mean, I don't understand how you see that as being ironic.
Maybe I said it wrong. You'd think he would have enough sense to get a dog license and to get his dogs from shots.
I agree, I agree.
So, again, I'll reiterate, the ball has been dropped. It's still, it's still fumbled. Somebody's fault.
It's a homeowner's fault, right? It was a dog owner's fault. We, I mean, I, listen, I totally simplify everything. I, I really, really do. And the question is, how do you separate, uh, you know, vicious dogs from regular dogs? And I don't know how to do that. There's gonna be, I'm sure that we can look at a variety of ordinances from other places to see what they've done, right, Martin?
I bet I could seek legal counsel and ask the question that, if the town you live in has a lease law and they're not enforcing it, who's liable? I'll bet it comes down to more than just the homeowner.
Well, you can, you can hire all the attorneys you want, sir. That's not what, I'm being compassionate towards the terrible incident that happened.
I'm making a point.
Well, the, the lease law is enforced. It's not going to be enforced on every single dog until it's witnessed by our officers and, and they can make contact with the owner. We write fistfuls of, of animal at large tickets. So, again, I, I don't wanna make any implication that we turn a blind eye to, to every dog that runs loose, because that's not the case. We, we issue the summons and we, we frequently ask, when we're on the call with an animal, if, if they're licensed. So I, I don't want to imply that it is not enforced. I think we've, uh, talked, I think we got the point, I think we...
We're on, we're on your side. We're gonna try to figure out what we can do, hopefully, for this in the future, as much as possible.
I hope so.
Ah, me too, man, me too.
Because my wife shouldn't have to go to work scared to deliver mail.
That's right, yeah.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely. Anybody else...
Thank you very much for coming.
Uh, Martin, I asked you to tell, oh. Let, let me tell you about what we currently have as far as city ordinance goes when it comes to what we consider dangerous animals. So in June of 2015, we adopted dangerous animal warrants. And it's a two-step process. One is that if certain conditions under which an animal is declared a potentially dangerous animal, then, then it escalates from there into the animal becoming a dangerous animal. The... Conditions for a dangerous animal is that an animal that is unprovoked, I mean, it's, it's not being taunted, it's not being directed as, because it's a security dog to attack. Attacks or inflicts a bite on a human or domestic animal, either on, on public or private property, chases or approaches people on the streets or sidewalks, a pet possesses a propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked or causes injury, has been found running at large, uh, more than twice in any eighteen-month period, or has been found running at large in a group of three other, three or more animals, 'cause the peck instinct kinda, could, so... If that's reported to me, I can declare that that animal is a potentially dangerous animal. It escalates to the dangerous animal when it bites or attacks or injures a person. You know, kind of the second event, so it's kind of a one, you know, if your animal happened to bite somebody once, you know, we're gonna tell you that that's a potentially dangerous animal. But it can also be declared a dangerous animal based on an attack. If it's declared dangerous animal, we have a list of things that people have to do to keep that animal inside the city limits. And, and they have to keep it in the house, it has to say restraining. If it's let outside, you have to have a pin that meets these specifications. It has to be enclosed, top and sides, it has to be buried in the ground. We, we, in, in addition to which, you have to take out and show evidence of insurance, that you have a liability insurance that will cover its actions up to a hundred thousand dollars. So the things that we're talking about, we did. Now, it's a question of how easy it is to enforce and what the will of the, of the board is for, for enforcement, and I hear that the will of the board's pretty high. Well, it is from this chair. The, the, you know, Alderman counts as if we can ban breeds. That's a very controversial topic across the nation. Breed-specific legislation occurs... Tom, excuse me, Tom, you might wanna...
I'm coming.
We'll wait.
Thank you.
There are only four states where they don't allow breed-specific legislation at the local level. There are eighteen states where, without it being disallowed, there just aren't any. And then there's all the rest of the states, thirty, that have some breed-specific legislation at the local level, because it's not prohibited nor is it necessarily authorized under the, the state statutes. Well, it has to be within your authority under the statutes. In Missouri, there are thirty-eight cities that have breed-specific bans. They don't all relate to one breed. But pit bulls are the most common breed that is prohibited within city limits. Uh, rottweilers, doberman Pinschers, alligators, I mean, there's a whole list of animals, domestic and wild, that are considered, considered dangerous. So it's possible to do that. But as it stands right now, what we have on the books is, based on a report, city administrator can, can, can declare and put on the registry an animal as being potentially dangerous, or dangerous, depending on the severity of his actions. And, and if the potentially dangerous dog acts again, it becomes automatically a dangerous dog, and those rather onerous requirements for ownership inside the city limits kick in, but we don't ban anybody.
Yeah, so the dog can bite someone once...
Basically.
And then we can decide.
But if it attacks somebody?
I think if the dog bites somebody... I think if the dog bites somebody one time, that's enough.
Then we'll need to revise this. We'll revise this.
Just once is more than enough.
Can I go ahead and ask my question? Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm going to let Frank talk about the...
I independently researched the breed-specific laws, and there are at least 85 cities that have adopted breed-specific laws, mainly targeted to pit bulls, including Frederictown and Bontaire. The state law is a one-bite law. The state statute says that a person commits the offense of keeping a dangerous dog if he or she owns or possesses a dog that has previously bitten a person or a domestic animal without provocation, and then that dog bites a second time. So, the question of whether or not we could have a no-bite, in other words, first bite, and then we get to destroy your dog, may be controversial, but I haven't really looked at that. And this whole thing may need more of a community response to what can we do using all the tools in our toolbox that we could have put together. Let me also say that from a municipal prosecutor point of view, I prosecute barking dogs. I prosecute dogs that are running at large. And if I see a police report that has a dog bite in it, then we take that very, very seriously, and the judge would be the one who would sentence on that. I'm not arguing in favor of somebody getting a light slap on the wrist for their dog running at large, but I do have older people that say, "My dog's never broken loose before. This is the first time, and it came back." And our dog running at large is graduated so that the first offense is lower than the second and subsequent offense on dogs running at large. There is a separate independent charge of not having your dog licensed. That would be count two. And I would say also that we prosecute, the city police department investigates and prosecutes on citizen complaints. So if you, as an individual, see a neighbor's dog running frequently at large and chasing folks, if you are willing to be, you know, in American society, there's a complaint that people don't want to snitch. But these are things, these are safety things that can save a child's life and save somebody else's life. If you would call the police officer and be willing to give, say, "That dog belongs to that guy in that mobile home over there," we've issued those tickets on the citizen complaint. But if you just expect that there is a fairy godmother police officer that's going to fly around and see all these dogs, we need your help. We can't do it. The police department, if they issue just a ticket that says "dog at large," that person's going to kind of slide under the radar. If they investigate it and they talk to the neighbor and the neighbor says there's, it's happened many, many times, that's usually placed in a police report as a supplement to the ticket. I would say the court system and the prosecutor's office is listening to what you're saying. And some of these people that have gotten bitten are friends of mine, too. And I don't want to see it happen, but you really can't expect the police department to be the sole prosecutor of dogs running at large.
Absolutely.
If you report them and you're willing to give your name and you're willing to participate in the system of coming to court if necessary, if they plead not guilty, we've prosecuted folks that have had barking dogs that just destroyed their ability to sleep at night. We've prosecuted dogs at large, dogs that jump over somebody else's fence and attack their dogs. We don't, I mean, people, I had a look at it as you're entitled to peaceful use of your property, not just, and personal safety. But the personal safety piece of it is frightening. And I think if we look at that as a target, if we want to prevent or protect personal safety, people are going to have to start reporting dogs at large, or dogs without collars. When somebody asks the question, "How do we know if they're registered?" Well, they got to have a collar with that little piece of metal hanging on. If you don't see it, that dog's illegal, and the owner's illegal. If this gets on the news and maybe there's, people rush to the vet and get their dogs vaccinated and licensed through the city, a lot of this will go away. There, you know, the state law is a one-bite law. It's not going to be very useful, because we don't want anybody to ever get bitten, as Mr. Cauter says. But if you don't report the dogs at large to the police department and you're not willing to sign a complaint, if the officer doesn't see it, they can't issue the ticket. But if you are willing to sign a complaint, we routinely issue the tickets. Because people don't want to make their neighbors mad. So...
Well, just me personally, I think part of the law is fine, but, and I'm just speaking for myself, not the rest of the board, I would have no trouble with prohibiting certain breeds that are aggressive, because I know you're going to hear, "Oh, it's just fine." You know? It's not. There's really only one reason somebody has an animal like that, and I don't think it means to be in the city limits for the safety of our citizens. If you want to have animals like that, go somewhere else. Go out and... But that's me. I'm not speaking for the board. That's my opinion. So...
Frank, when you talk about the levying of fines, who decides how much to...
We have a standard schedule that the judge sets up. First defense on a dog at large is, I don't even know what it is. It might be $25. It might be 50. But if I have a report and a neighbor that says, "This dog has been chasing my dog and been chasing children," and it's in the report, that ticket is not going to be handled through the, it's called the fine collection bureau, where if you get a speeding ticket, you can come in and plead guilty and just pay the fee.
Well, I mean, it's one thing if somebody's dog gets out of the yard. I've had dogs. That stuff happens. But if it's an aggressive animal, that's a whole nother thing. And if it's a repeated thing, where a neighbor can say, you know, "Every day, that dog is getting under the fence," or "It's chasing people," well, then, you know...
The breed-specific law, we would not be inventing anything here. We can take inbornance from somebody else.
Right.
I will say that when Martin and I were talking about it, we think that most of them have a grandfather clause that says if you already have a pit bull, you don't have to remove it. I'd want to take a look at that. But even so, we can keep more dangerous dogs from coming into the community and put people on notice.
There needs to be zero tolerance on it, because you just can't expect people to live like that, you know?
Right. But it does require the cooperation of the community...
Right.
...to report to the police department and be willing to do your civic duty and say, "This is happening, and I don't want a child to get hurt, so I'm willing to put my name on it." It's not like complaining about the neighbor's stereo being too loud.
Right.
This is something that could really cause and has caused harm. So we need people to step up and do their civic duty to help us fight that problem.
Just a real simple little question, if you don't mind. Can I, as the postmaster, sign the complaint on behalf of the carrier?
Or supervisor?
Because in that way, because we already had it happen with this dog. Where Carriers was out, and the dog owner, we believe, or two guys in a car went by, and one of the other carriers made some obscene gestures.
I would say if you didn't witness it, I would expect that if they pled not guilty, that you would get your carrier to come to court and testify.
But I would rather take the heat from the carrier.
Yes.
Can I ask a couple of questions now, based upon these rules?
Sure.
Once again, Craig Slate, delivery supervisor. Dog problems. Where Carriers, we find them all the time. Almost 30 years, 28 years in the service, right? So, dogs are our main thing. Would it surprise you that we literally keep logs onto dog activities? You're wondering, oh, two, three times, and they move up in a category? We have that. We can tell you when this dog has confronted our carrier multiple times.
What is your...
We would be more than happy to call you every time that this happens and put it on record.
What is your policy to alert the authorities? So you've got this, you've got this policy. Who do you tell?
Honestly, you want the truth on that?
Absolutely, it's the truth.
We've been given an awesome number where we can call the dispatch directly, not the 911, but the dispatch directly. Unfortunately, when we call them, sometimes there's no one there. When we call them, sometimes there's a recording explaining that there's no one there right now, but they should be back shortly.
You need to be calling them on the line, because that's where the dog catcher comes from.
You tell us what you would like to have us do.
There should never be a time that you call that number totally.
We know that, but last week, that just happened, you know?
We'll make sure you have the correct number.
These things happen here. Well, we had the correct number. We probably made dispatch.
That's straight to animal control.
No, this is straight to the dispatch.
Okay.
So, it doesn't always work as planned also. Like I said, we keep logs on all of this. Also, let's be something here specific. There isn't 2,000 mad vicious dogs running loose in your town. Let's narrow that down to five to 10 that we have problems with within your city limits. It wouldn't be difficult if we had two or three instances, which each of them, you have a dangerous that moves up to a really dangerous dog ordinance here. If it only takes three complaints to move them up to where we then get to go and take a look and see if they have a license and move them through that process, which is very expensive on their behalf, it would probably cost them to get rid of the dog. We would be more than happy to log that down and move it in. All we need to do is come and test these guys.
The first notice will trigger the license investigation.
I'm okay with that. You know, that's exactly what we're looking for. We agree with the chief. It's hard to do something when nothing is against the legal until something's already happened.
But if you share...
But we need a proactive approach, and this could be it right here.
If you, you're telling us you collect this information.
Right.
You've got to share it with the police department locally, and, I mean, if you don't share it, what good is the information?
What does the police do when they go and the dog's back in the yard? What can you possibly do if the dog's in the owner's yard?
With a complaint, we can issue you something.
Well, that's not the sheriff's decision on that side. When the dog catcher comes, so to speak, Officer Barton, who's an awesome guy, I like him also, but if he comes and sees the dog go right back into the yard, he's already told us there's nothing we can do.
I wasn't asking you about that. I was asking, you're telling us...
I'm explaining why we don't always go through the police.
I don't understand, but not every single time. I want to put a lease on every single dog. I would sure like it if you told us, you know, what information you were getting, so we could be proactive.
We appreciate your support. We love that. And we've been glad to see that that's coming on now. But unfortunately, this wasn't coming on until after several people got sabotaged.
I can assure you, this table never, I mean, it's never been on the list of to look at here. You cannot say that this has not been coming. You never told us about it.
And they've been reported to the authorities, Officer Barton, on many occasions. Is there anybody here that hasn't personally called Officer Barton on several occasions?
I've called 911, and...
So I'm sorry that they didn't report that to you.
And I came by the police station afterwards, and they said, "Well, I'm sure if Barton was contacted, he would have taken care of it." And I said, "Can you call him?"
We don't have a very good system for a dog catcher.
That's what we're saying.
But right tonight, right?
Well, we agree that their hands are tied to in such a way, but there are ordinances on here that we would be more than happy to work with, you know, together. I think that we can do something very proactive and move forward on that.
We can have some work sessions and invite you to participate.
And there are quite a few cities that, in the state of Missouri, that you read on there, but nationwide, there's over 700 cities specifically that have banned pit bulls. Over 700 nationwide.
Over 80 in Missouri.
I know. That's what I'm saying. It's a significant number.
I think it's time to do something.
We're talking to death.
Yeah.
I would like to have...
But just so that we're clear on this, if we were to contact this nice gentleman up here in the yellow shirt, for instance, and let him know that we have a complaint, that's all we need to do?
All you need to do is say that there's a complaint that... I'll give you a copy of the ordinance. I'll drop it off.
The city police we're talking about, correct?
No. You can call me if you want to...
Lodge a complaint.
Lodge a complaint. Now, if you want immediate action, I'm going to put it in a log book.
We're going to do both, yeah.
Like you do. And it's going to be potentially dangerous dog. It hadn't bitten anybody, but it was aggressive. It did, you know, it bit the neighbor's dog, something like that, you know, then it goes, and then the next report triggers the dangerous animal. Or, you know, if in this case where there was an attack, well, that's automatically a dangerous animal.
Sounds like a winner. We appreciate all the support that you guys are giving. Seriously, we love what we're hearing here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we have a work session on reviewing and understanding and possibly amending our ordinance for...
Breed-specific.
Breed-specific dogs.
Sure.
So, when we have a work session, I would like to invite you guys to sit in and participate. Because this is, we could talk about this all night, and it's not doing the rest of our dock any good. So, quick, real soon, week, next week, two weeks from now, sometime real quick. I think everybody's in agreement.
Yeah.
To do everything that we can.
We'd like what we're hearing.
Okay.
Chief, real quick, Barton does not have city...
He's chief, man of action.
Barton is not, does not hold a city commission.
The reason Barton's right, though, is he can't enforce city ordinance.
No, I understand.
Our guys can.
And honestly, I think that's part of the problem. We got two people that we would love to work, but they're not exactly meshed where they work together. And also, everything that we report to the police doesn't automatically get reported up to you guys. And I know that's unfortunate sometimes, in this particular case when it comes to the dog problem. But we understand that. There's a lot they're doing out there. They're very busy police. We greatly respect what they're doing out there for us.
I think that our...
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Chief, is there a reason why he's not commissioned through the city, or could he be? That would be a tricky area. I don't have a problem. We can check that out, too?
There's no real advantage. If Martin is willing to report the complaint to my office and the chief is willing to report it, we can use our city ordinance. And there is the same parallel state law. The parallel state law, though, is a little different. It says they picked the dog up on a second bite, impounded for 10 days, and then it's put away, unless the property owner goes to court and gets a court order preventing the putting away of the dog. Ours, we don't euthanize animals under our ordinance. We trigger a whole bunch of requirements for cages and just make life miserable for...
We're talking about all that and working for it.
Yeah.
How much is a dog license, and what do they need to get that?
It depends on if they're spayed or neutered, it's less than $10 or under.
Yeah. It's not that it's, you know, that expensive for these people, you know?
And what they need to do is get it vaccinated.
Then you get the license.
Yeah, see, but that's where a lot of them go, because they don't want to spend the money for the shots and they're doing everything right, and that's...
Okay. We will plan a work session either before or at the next meeting. We probably have budgets.
Well, today's your last budget work session.
Okay. We could do it after the next meeting, or maybe it may be a bunch of people. So, we may end up having to have a special meeting. It may last a while. All right. Thank you all. Thanks for your comments. Certainly, the board has heard your concerns and do something. Thank you. Okay, Kara, you're next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Stop interrupting me.
Mayor, can I get Bob Brown and Mr. Black to pull you loose?
We sure know how to clear out a road.
I know, right? Put the owner on, I promise. Kara, Downtown Renewal Project, in light of all the dog stuff, I will say I personally have two beagles, and I didn't know there was a city, so I will be licensing them. And for that, as we're sitting here, in October with our art walk, we were going to look at having a pet parade, so maybe we should look at having a pet drive and city licensure alongside with that and raise awareness. We would be happy to go on board. Well, I mean, not necessarily just that, but have them sign up there while we have it.
Yeah, I got it.
Kill two birds with one stone. So, that'll be something our board will work with you guys on. I just wanted to update you guys with the design committee for the wayfinding signs. They did meet with Alderman Caldwell, and the design committee met, made some clarifications. We, as a board, are having a special board meeting on September 6th to discuss more in-depth information, and then we will bring it to you in this, at your September 8th Alderman meeting, so that we have it more informed and it's more of a presentation for you guys. The board is very anxious to get together, and we all agreed to have a special board meeting just for the wayfinding signs, so...
What time is that, Kara?
Our meeting?
September 6th, maybe?
It is, the board meeting is at 6 o'clock at Sagy Carriers. We have all... We have also been talking about our priority projects for 2017. In my report to you, we talked about with the wayfinding signs, having the stop sign poles and different signage through downtown all streamlined and managed, looking the same way so that it's not hodgepodge together. I was walking around with the dogs, and some poles are silver, and some poles are black, and some poles are green, so that is something that we can work towards.
Okay. You're going to work towards painting the poles, or what?
That's, the board is going to bring that to you. That's, I was just letting you know what their details are going to be. So, we're working on our priority projects and our budgets, et cetera. Also, I told you guys about the window display contest for St. John and Valley for the football game. The schools told us that they just felt it was too crazy of a week this week to do that, so they are moving that back to the fall. We're looking at possibly doing that at Cookie Crump's, so don't drive downtown and look for the painted windows. It's not happening this week. It'll happen later in the fall. And we do have our art walk tomorrow night for the football theme. And that's all that I have, other than our budget proposals that we'll bring to you on the 18, or on the September 8th for the wayfinding signs.
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Morning.
Okay. It looks like we're going to be saving with refinancing over the course of our debt, about 5.1562 percent, $139,733 dollars, if it stands based on the interest rates when I wrote this a couple of days ago. The bids are out on the cemetery, and I've talked to two contractors who intend to bid it, so that'll be moving along. It seemed a reasonable planning. I got wind of something called Proposition 4, and Proposition 4 would be a proposition that would be on the ballot for a constitutional amendment. It would exempt services from taxation. And the reason I'm bringing it to you is because that's just another erosion of the tax base, although none of these things are collecting taxes now anyway because services aren't currently taxed. So, they're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. So, it's the real estate, and very clearly, the state real estate organization who is sponsoring this, and they're trying to head off any proposal to tax professional services. Not that I'm aware of anything that's coming up, but you may see or hear more about this in the near future. The park board meeting, we met, they met. Their priority project is a sand volleyball court, which we've been talking about before. They're currently out soliciting donations for the base and the sand material. Dave's done some pricing on putting up the poles and buying nets and that kind of thing. Depending on the level of donation that we receive on the base and the sand, it could be done for the $5,000 or less that you've been allocating to them.
Are they going to take any of that money and fix the fountain at the park so it doesn't either stick out two or three feet and look different, or it's not under the water?
Fountain fix for a floating fountain, which is the fix, we just have to replace that. That's just not fixed. It's not working.
I don't know why it wouldn't be in there to begin with. I'd just like to see fountain fix.
The floating.
Well, they got the idea of the fountain. They got the donation of this pump. And so, for $250, they were able to do what they did.
Right, and that doesn't matter why it wasn't the first, but it really, something we need to make it look a little better, because it looks really nice when it's just right.
Floating fountain is about, it's 2,000, well, it depends on, they can get 6,000, but it's a $2,000.
I'd rather see them fix the fountain than just about anything, or else make sure it's on their list for next year.
Okay. I'll put that back.
Well, listen, anybody can do a project that doesn't turn out just the way you want it to. And that's just all that was, so it's got one little fix to make.
We've initiated the changeover of the health insurance. There's a Heritage Commission meeting, I think, rather than me saying that, the automatically has on, has a statement he'd like to make. Do you?
I hadn't actually prepared anything, but I do see where there are some changes that need to be made there, and I would like to, at this time, propose that we have a work session or a meeting where we get together with that board and maybe talk about how we can streamline some things better, in a better manner. I think in light of what we've all been through tonight, I don't think we need to drag over all this stuff, but I do really, seriously believe it needs to be addressed so that we can.
The issue of the night was, again, the exposed fastener metal roofs.
Right.
And Alderman Donovan, maybe you have some insight into this, but there's a question of whether that roofing is appropriate for residential use, or.
I mean, it's not designed for it.
Yeah.
It's an agricultural panel. That's basically what it's designed for. I mean, there is exposed fasteners that are used in commercial applications. We have them on the firehouse, I think.
So, you would say that no prefabricated metal building company uses exposed fasteners on the outside of a residential structure?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay. Well, I think the, I think what, Randy, I had a little bit of a discussion, and I think we constantly, we've mentioned it before, that we've got roofs, we have windows, and we have siding. That seem to be the three things that keep popping up all the time. And whether, if we can get together as feelings of this board and the feelings of that board versus the design guidelines that have been adopted, and again, that board is following the design guidelines as they were adopted.
Right.
If we feel like those things need to be changed, and they need to be followed some different rules based on input that we all have gotten, then let's do that and maybe make the whole system work a little bit better, a little less frustrating for everybody, that board included, and even this one. I mean, you don't like, we don't like seeing appeals. You guys don't like making those decisions. Nobody does, and that board, I know that board's looking at it as, here's what it says, here's what we're going to go by, and we're going to say yes or no based on those. So, if we can get together on maybe revising some of those three issues. And, you know, to double what you're saying, and put it in writing, because we've made statements in the past, and then they always say, well, you didn't put it in writing, and nobody told us, and blah, blah, blah. So, we put it in writing, and. Well, we just change the design guidelines. Right. But whatever, it's got to be, when they open the book, boom. Right. So, so there. And I don't know if that's the whole board, I mean, this could take, maybe it's just a few members of this board and a few members of that board might be the answer to that, because I don't think it's going to happen in one work session. Carla, any input?
I agree. I don't know that it's going to happen in one work session, but definitely, you know, having just some direction, one way or another, would, my hands are tied as far as what the design guidelines say specifically. And if they're changing what they have on the roof, if they're changing different than what they have, and they're not going back to original, then I cannot approve it. And that's where it would go to the board. Where they do have a little more, you know, give, one way or another, because of the guidelines. So, if there is something that, again, these three topics that come back, you know, every time.
How about two people from this board, two people from that board?
I'll be happy to sit in on it. You and I and the mayor.
I'd be glad. Anybody else? On this board?
On this board? Would you?
Bobby.
You've got construction experience, so that would be good.
Would it be acceptable if Downtown Renewal from their design?
That's fine. Yeah, if another person.
Try to put it in as well.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. So, if you can, if you can get two volunteers off of the Heritage Commission, and if you want to add a person, that's fine. Any input would be valuable. All right. We'll do that.
Okay, there've been a couple of meetings from the Housing Authority, and one of which has led to an item that's on the agenda for your vote tonight. Did you know Carla was appointed to the Housing Authority Board as the city's representative? That was not allowed in the original statute under which the authority was set up, which was later amended in the state statutes, so that one person on the board could be an employee or officer of the city. Everybody acknowledges that they could do it. The Department of Housing and Urban Development thinks that it creates a potential conflict if the city has to exercise its code enforcement authority over the housing authority, and that person's sitting on the housing authority board. So, they're asking that we agree by policy, and that's what the resolution does, that the city employee who is appointed to the Housing Authority will not be participating in any city action relative to the housing authority's operations. So, I think that's, actually, I think it's logical. The, finally, there's been a lot of, and you all heard, about mowing of cemeteries. Kind of looked at the budget and talked to Dave Pinkley. We think we could make a capital investment in a moor and another trimmer, weed whip, in the order of, you know, $6,200. And then pay out of the cemetery fund for seasonal help, whose only job would be to cut the cemetery, and we figure it would be four times in April, and four times in May, then three in June, and down to two in July, and August, and September, or more if needed, as we've had this season. But on average, you're going to look at those 17 times. You've got two guys working, and Dave thinks to do it right, it takes a day to do both cemeteries.
Two guys?
Yeah.
You can't do it in one day.
Can't do it in one day?
No, no way.
All right, well, we need to.
No.
How long do you think?
Two days.
Okay, double that.
Yeah, because I used to mow the cemeteries, and I had three people in there, and there's no way you can do that in one day.
Well, if you do it in one day, and you can't, our labor costs are $3,300. If you do it in two days, we're still under what we think we're going to get a bid on, because we think the bids this year, next year, will be $10,000. So, or more. So, because it was $9,800 three years ago, the second bidder. So, rather than bidding it out, we think we're better advised to go ahead and make the investment, the equipment, hire some people who would just be for that, that would be their work.
I don't know how you can, you're hiring them.
Retired people, folks who just want to fill in. I don't know if we'll find anybody. We're going to find out before we do it.
What do you, you've done, what do you say?
It's just a god-awful amount of weed.
Oh, sure.
I mean, it just goes on forever and ever, and it'd really be hard to get that done.
So, the mowing doesn't take as long as the weed.
Well, it both takes a long time.
But what do you think about the idea? Do you think, you think we're better, certainly we got more control over with what we, the issues that we've had?
Well, I will tell you one person that bid $9,800 or whatever it was, I talked to him yesterday, he said he wouldn't do it for $20,000. He said he's done. He said it's just not worth it. He says it's too much trouble, and he said it's just not worth the money. So, he said, I wouldn't bid it for $20,000 anymore. So.
And we can definitely afford it.
Yeah. But I don't know if we just have the manpower to, I mean, that's a hard job. You hire somebody, re-hire, and go up there and say, hey, you're going to pick up this weed eater for eight hours a day, and you're going to do this? That's rough, Dick.
Well, sure.
It is.
And I mean, certainly during the summer, you can probably find younger people that would be looking to do that, but you'd have the march.
The worst-case scenario, we end up with the mower, and we just add it to our fleet, and then bid it out next, the next year, if we don't like.
I like the idea that you can keep a tighter rein on the quality that way, you know?
Well, as far as how we're working out with personnel, we think we can do it equal to or less than what we anticipate the bids will be next time we bid it out.
This guy you're working out with, he's $700 a month or something. It's ridiculous.
It's not a lot. No, it's not a lot. That's why we're anticipating that bids are going to be considerably higher.
So, are you actually going to bid it the next time?
No, 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 we'll do this.
Whatever you guys, whatever you think.
I'll be coming to you to sign a contract to purchase a mower.
You think, want to try it at least?
Yeah. Dave said he might want to.
And again, recall, this is, the cemetery fund can only be used for maintenance of the cemetery, so we're not robbing money from some other city.
I still think we're going to have a trouble one time if somebody goes in there weeding. I mean, that's a, no matter where you look at the cemetery, there's something to be weeded. It doesn't stop.
That's a great question about the Memorial Cemetery over there. Did you used to do that, that big hillside?
Uh, not every time.
But that was, I don't think it's been done at all this year. It's pretty rough. You know what I'm talking about?
We used to, we used to weed eat it like once every two months or something like that, and get it cleaned off.
I think there's like saplings and stuff starting up in there now.
And one other thing that I would like, if you wouldn't mind taking on, would be, we talked a little bit about trees over there. Would you go and figure out trees along the road, like it's in the upper part of the cemetery?
Yeah.
Would you, either we make the trees match what's in the upper part of the cemetery? Me and suggested that our end-up would look a lot better if we had some trees.
Oh, down in Valley Springs?
Exactly, Springs, yes. Not up here. Not up in Springs. To take that on and figure out about how many we would take, and I guess the fall would be a good time to plant those?
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay. We'll get the road done, get those planted yet this year.
Where are we going to plant this? Where do we have room to plant it?
Well, there'd be room along the road, wouldn't there? That we wouldn't get in any way of.
You mean between where the posts are and where the graves start? Between the road and the plant field.
On the other side?
Well, I don't, would there be room between the road and where the graves start?
I don't think there would be, that's what I asked.
I don't know what they're doing on the upper part, but look at, if you would.
You talk about that some other time, please.
Look at.
For goodness sakes. I'm trying to.
You're just doing, I know what you're doing. All right.
Okay, what kind of trees?
That's your problem. There we go.
All right. Any questions for Mark?
Just thinking about Kenny Switzer.
Yes.
Oh, you were going to, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. You don't have to read it. If you're in business and you're paying taxes on what you buy, you don't have to have a sales tax license.
That's correct.
Yeah, you don't need it.
What's happened is, I was approached by Kenny Switzer, and he asked me to bring this up to board, and I was getting along, so I wanted to, but when someone comes in to get the business license from us, we ask them if they're going to be selling products, that they say, yes, and we require them to have a state sales tax license. But not every business sells things that are subject to sales taxes.
If there's wholesale, this thing wouldn't happen.
Now, people who are in the HVAC business, sometimes, you know, if they have a sales tax license, when they go to buy their supplies from the wholesaler, they don't pay taxes. But then, when they do the work, they collect the taxes. But the next person may go to wholesale plumbing and pay the taxes on their supplies, in which case, they don't charge taxes when they do the work. His point is that that's a loss to the city because they're paying those taxes, sales taxes, in some other jurisdictions.
I never looked at it that way.
And that we ought to require anyone who's in that business to have a sales tax license. Accountants have informed me, well, you can require my clients to have a sales tax license, that's up to you. That doesn't mean they're going to do what you want them to do. They'll just file zero every year. They're going to continue to buy their stuff and not charge them, and so you, I don't[1761.62] I mean, so you...I don't know. So, the question is, do you want us to require a sales tax license from people who are getting business licenses, particularly in this business?
That's something we can talk about later.
Kenny has brought this point up before, right? We've talked about it before, and he certainly has a point, and that is, people that are in business and have storefronts and runs a store like he does, that has to charge sales and charge a sales tax versus the people in similar businesses as his that are working out of their house that don't charge sales tax. They just go pay a sales tax to another jurisdiction whenever they go buy the parts and pass it on to the person whenever they give them the bill. The city, the county's losing out on money, and it...his mind is not fair. And again, we can...I don't know that it's not a bad idea that we require certain businesses to have that sales tax...have the sales tax.
You know, I never looked at it that way, Mayor, but that is a good point.
Now, it's gonna be hard, as Martin says, it's gonna be hard and hell of a force, but at least they would have to fill out the form, and even if it's none, I mean, even if they don't collect that...
They have to file a report.
They have to file a report. And...
My good friend Bob Brother, when I first went in business, he never paid...he paid taxes on everything. Everything. He paid it himself, but he never wanted to be out of it. Which brings me to another story. It was 1982, and we were down in...
Was Bob there?
Yeah, we were down in K...remember that?
All right. Yeah, please. Carla, we're up to you.
Good evening. So, you have my staff report in front of you. Does anyone have any questions?
So, regarding the nuisance, maybe Earth Back home?
I actually did hear about some country yesterday, and I went by there today and took photographs. She has made improvement. It's not completed. She had until today to take care of that, so the day's not over yet. I'll go back tomorrow to see what the status is. And I have made a couple of phone calls to different hauling companies to find out, you know, have them come out, give us an estimate if after tomorrow it's not cleared, and the brush, and even the, like, the scrub trees that are around the foundation of the house. And I did send a letter or an email back to her this afternoon stating the items that are still needing to be taken care of. If I don't hear, you know, back anything by tomorrow, then I'll start proceeding to make those...get those estimates.
I find it interesting, she obviously has the finances to retain an attorney. No offense, but couldn't she just hardly that money just to cleaning up the property?
I can't answer that.
I know you can't, but I just inquire in my...you know? Anyway, well, at least something's...let's just hope it keeps...
I have a question concerning occupants of municipal inspections.
Certainly.
Where and when?
Where and when?
Yes.
The occup...you mean where and when are they performed?
Yes.
They're required annually unless the occupant lives there longer than a year, and then it is...it's good for the term that they're there. It used to be annually. The ordinance was changed. There was a lot of complaints...this was prior to me, but there were a lot of complaints from landlords about having to have their properties inspected every three months, every four months, six months, because they had someone that was there on a short term or a turnover, and having them inspected so many times a year. So, the ordinance was changed to allow for the inspection to be valid for a year, and if the tenant is there longer than a year, then it's valid the term that they're there. We monitor it as best we can by water. We do have some situations where the landlord keeps the water in their name, which makes it difficult to track those. We have, on occasion, been able to see the differences in the usage and have been successful at times contacting the owner of the property and just explaining to him that we've noticed the difference in the water usage. Do you have a new tenant in there? We need to inspect. Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. Kenny's here, all right?
Good evening, folks. Just like her, you should have my report in front of you. If there's any questions?
You want to take the opportunity, there's a couple of change orders that don't consider... I've got to change orders for the fire button. Maybe you don't...don't worry about it, I'll talk about it at a time. We have to change orders to order the order. I'm...I said change the budget in order to get the money so you can pay the taxes. That's a budget. Okay.
One of the topics on tonight's agenda is, I think we got players ranging that we are going to divine off a grant. And we have a first reading, I'm gonna respectfully request a second one because the current price is set with current rebates at this time, so if we can get it before the end of the month, the price won't change on us. I did find one typo in my report under training, says I attended an hour training on retention. That was actually an eight-hour class, an all-day class on retention and recruiting. And basically, what we're doing here in the city is what everybody else is doing, it's just a national trend of fewer and fewer volunteers.
How many volunteers do you have?
We're chartered for 28. I currently have 26 on the roster, and I've got about 20 to 22 that are pretty active.
Pretty good.
Pretty good average. And that's all dependent on full-time jobs and everything. 3 o'clock in the afternoon is...what are those tight times? We actually will look at people, and we will potentially put them on at 18 with my approval, and we can cover them at insurance, but we can't allow them to drive till they're 21. And to be state-certified firefighter 1 and 2, they have to get to that age also, and we require everybody to get state certification, like we just completed the last class.
Are you open for older, smaller, the bar?
I may not be able to put him on as an actual firefighter. I can find a place for anybody that wants to come out and give a hand.
Is there an upper limit?
That's at the board's discretion and at their health...how well their health holds out.
This should be discussed in the close session.
We had a gentleman, Lynn Henderson, that was a volunteer up until, I think, the mid- 60s, and then he just kinda hung around afterwards and would help us out on calls, go make coffee and things like that, so we'll take him, whatever.
How about based on their abilities? Do you have some kind of test that you do to ensure that they're agile and mobile, if not hostile?
We basically put the firefighter 1 and 2, and we also try to put them through a basic firefighter course, which is a 36-hour course that gives the general overall what a firefighter does. It's the basics we try to do, and then the firefighter 1 and 2 will weed out the people because they actually have to do physical things.
Okay, so there's a physical abilities test.
Somewhere down the line, one of my hopes and goals is eventually to do an annual physical for our guys, too.
So, someone like Tom Couch, Alderman Couch, he wants to be a firefighter, and all he wants to do is make coffee. Does he have to go through a physical or anything? Because he's never gonna make it.
If I could be a firefighter 1, can I help around the firehouse?
You really...if you're not gonna be actively involved in the firefighting, I can let you do a lot of other things around the firehouse.
I am surprisingly flexible for my size, so keep that in mind. Alvin Hook, thank you for volunteering.
Make burgers for you.
There you go. We do like to cook once in a while.
There you go. We can do that.
Yeah.
A question we'll talk to later.
Anything else, Kenny?
They tell you things that finally slowed down now that we got the 1 and 2 program, so we're starting to get caught up with some other stuff. Everything's going smooth out there, I think.
How's this players gonna be set up and primarily what's it gonna be used?
It was gotten through the community development grant under the guise of the technical rescue team. The main idea behind it is to be able to handle gear and bring people out of rescue situations. But because it's not an everyday occurrence, we're also gonna set it up to do brush fires and things like that with a little tank in the back and a sprayer, and it can go help us on brush fires. Eventually, I'd like to get like a little snowplow so I can help keep the driveway clean and things like that around it, too. The main thing is for rescue and carrying gear to and from calls and tight applications.
Windshield, roof, windshield?
Eventually. The price we have right now is just a base unit. We did receive a grant a couple of years ago from Community Foundation that we still have some money left for training and equipment. I can use some of that money to outfit it the way we need to.
Good. All right, thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Happy night.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. I'm Paul Sut, you guys do...you guys have my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Steve, I got a complaint yesterday from a homeowner...
I think it's about 600 blocks of LaPorte. He leases a buyout property from the city, but there is a water meter on that piece of property, according to the homeowner, there's no meter in it, it's just kind of an empty hole. And he was just wondering if we could get by there and take that meter lid off, fill a hole in, unless there's a reason it should be left.
If there's any plans for any future development at that location?
Can't be, it's buyout property. I mean, the FEMA, you know, won't allow anything to be built there.
I'll definitely look into it.
Yeah, it's a 600 blocks of LaPorte, it's right next to that house on the right. You'll find it. And they'd mentioned that they might have...mentioned that before, so I told them I would take it to LaPorte.
You said he's leasing it? Leasing it?
No, he leases the buyout property from the city and has for many, many years.
Right.
And it's on the buyout property.
Right, wouldn't that be our call if he's leasing it from the city?
Our call for what?
To get rid of the hole, to fill it all.
Yeah, to get rid of that.
Yes.
Listen, if it needs to stay there, it needs to stay there. If it didn't need to stay there, we probably ought to pull that off, fill a hole in, so they can mow it.
He's right, I mean, you can't...there's nothing you can do a buyout property that would require a water meter.
Yeah. Thank you. Having trouble finding it?
Water regard. Yeah, what about that?
Oh, you're talking about water regard.
No, forget it, just check it out.
Every time back in 1984.
Anything else you can add for Steve?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Sandra?
Good evening, everyone. Light of the evening's previous lengthy discussions, I'm gonna keep this real short and sweet. You have my report in front of you. We're up about 10% per year on our total number of guests through the Welcome Center. I chose to focus this report on our group tour business that we manage through the Welcome Center. It's not something that you always hear about, so I thought you just might like to see some of the dates that were involved. And as Kara said, we have upcoming events, the Fourth Friday Art Walk this Friday night, sponsored by St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal. And I've begun to work with the Rural Heritage Day organizers, just finished working with the Jerde Fed Committee organizers, and also with the St. Genevieve History Conference. And then I'll be talking to you later this evening about such a...so, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Any public comments from anybody?
Can I go back real quick? I forgot to introduce my girls that are with me.
Sure.
This is Jen Morrell, she's our treasurer. She's been on since March of this year, and this is Casey Benner, and she is an at-large member who is looking at possibly coming on as promotions when we have our nominations later this fall.
Good, welcome.
Any reports from the board? Then, at this time being 7:13, we'll open a public hearing. When a property tax rate proposed to be set by City of St. Genevieve, the political subdivision, the tax rate shall be set to produce revenues which the budget for fiscal year 2017 shows to be required from the property tax. Anybody have any comments? If you're gonna be voting on this, a little bit.
Once again, this is basically set by the county, isn't it?
State.
States, okay. So, we don't have much say in this whatsoever.
All right, 7:14, we'll close the public hearing. Go to the minutes of the regular meeting of August the 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Someone over there, too.
And the minutes from the close session of August the 11th that are coming around...
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the treasurer's report for July.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2016 31, resolution limiting employee jurisdiction over the St. Genevieve Housing Authority. That was added to the agenda, and you have a copy of it, I believe. Yeah. You have a question, Joe?
Yeah. Have no jurisdiction over the housing authority regarding compliance with the municipal codes, so...
All it says is if we appoint a city employee to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority, that if there's something comes up that relates to their city job in the housing authority, somebody else is gonna...somebody else in the city's gonna handle it.
She would just have to refuse herself from voting or having input.
The Housing Authority Board...
Represent them in opposition.
Yes, she will vote however she chooses, but she couldn't then be the code enforcement official who's saying, "You gotta fix your roof." That would fall to me or to whomever I designate.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carla is...and this protects us also for the future, but Carla's a very important part of kind of the reorganization of the housing authority and some of the things that it's going through right now, so that's why it's really important that I feel like she's...she needs to stay on there, so...
I agree also. Who did you say you represented before?
Donny.
Donny's the automatic...he didn't have an award.
We didn't have one.
Until Carla was appointed.
Okay, good.
Okay, no business, new business, bill number 4115.
And ordinance levying taxes for the year 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need to have this back through the county, so could we...have a motion for a second?
Make a motion for second reading.
Second. All in favor, second reading of 4115?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading of 4115.
An ordinance levying taxes for the year 2016.
Approve. Second.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Juckers?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hough?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Uzika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4115 now becomes ordinance 4051.
Thank you. Bill number 4116, First Street.
And ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a professional consulting services agreement with Buesnick, Hay, Rowe, and Stroger LLC, certified public accountants of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, for auditing services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Bill number 4117, First Street.
An ordinance approving budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2016 budget relating to the Rural Fire Fund Budget Number 60.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We need to have a second on both, don't we?
No.
Just this one?
Why would we need that? Because of the budget.
This is a budget amendment.
Oh, the budget amendment. Oh, the budget amendment.
If we're only doing it by the end of the year and all the numbers...
Yeah, let's leave it there. Bill number 4118, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2016 Budget relating to the Valley Springs Tiff Fund Budget Number 40.
Once again, this is money that's been spent, we're just reconciling it by... I'm making motion approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 4119, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2016 Budget relating to the K-9 Fund Budget Number 29.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All's gotta eat, right? Bill number 4120, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2016 Budget relating to the Transportation Fund Budget Number 21.
This was the amount that point base cost us beyond what two funds were available.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was 20, right?
Yeah.
That was 20, okay. You mean 21 is the...oh, okay. Bill number 4121, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2016 Budget relating to the General Fund Budget Number 10, Department Number 16 Police.
For me?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Bill number 4122, first reading.
An ordinance approving the purchase of a 2016 Polaris Ranger 570 full-size side-by-side from Serdike Motorsports at Festus, Missouri in an amount not to exceed $8,600.
I'm making motion approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm making a motion for a second reading. Making a motion for a second reading of bill number 4122.
I'll second it.
Joe, all in favor, second reading of 4122?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 4122.
An ordinance approving the purchase of a 2016 Polaris Ranger 570 full-size side-by-side from Serdike Motorsports of Festus, Missouri in an amount not to exceed $8,600.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Uzika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Huck?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4122 now becomes ordinance 4052.
Okay, thank you. All right, under other business, Kenny and Donna Niagara are appealing the decision of the St. Genevieve Heritage Commission for the replacement of the existing standing seam exposed fastener asphalt shingle roof on the property located at 373 North 4th Street. Carla?
I would like to enter into section 410.400 of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code. And then included in your packets are the letter of appeal, my staff report, the record of vote, which was initially a motion to approve, died to lack of a second. Then there was a motion to deny, which passed three, one, and one absent.
So, Dennis, what do they want to do?
They have, they currently have, the main portion of the property has a standing seam roof. There is an exposed fastener roof on another portion of an addition that was put on the house. And then there's a small section that has an asphalt shingle roof. He's wanting to remove all of that and go back with a exposed fastener metal roof.
What was your recommendation?
My recommendation was denial because that's the design guidelines where it's...
You and I talked about this a little bit as we looked at that picture. Your denial on it is based on, tell me, tell me what you're...is it the profile of the metal or is it the exposed fastener?
The...
Or is it something?
Well, my denial is based on that, well, that it doesn't specify that exposed fastener can be used on a roof. I have found, I've seen in the, in the design guideline book, there is one photograph in there where the profile of the roof appears very much to be an exposed fastener, same rib pattern. You can't see the fasteners because of the angle of the photograph, but it's a very, it looks, it looks like your classic rib that County Doitt would sell. But it's not specified in there and it, it's...
You know, these are the things we need to get ironed out. My feeling on it is that you should let them put the roof on. Are you making a...
I'm making a motion, yes. I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Comments?
I think we've already set precedent.
I think so too.
For other, for ones that would just done in the recent past, you know, pretty similar.
Well, you all aware of where it is, proximity to everything else?
I don't see where it's gonna present a problem with aesthetics. The house sits up so high, I don't know how you, you really can't even see the roof on top of that hill. Again, they're not, they're not changing the structure, they're not changing the shape of the structure nor the framing. They're not changing the overall character of the house. So it's my opinion, you should allow them to do it. I'm gonna make a motion.
You already made it.
Yeah, I already made it.
Okay. All right. Motion made and second to overturn or to allow the, the metal roof. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Carl.
Thanks, everybody. We probably need to go into a real smart closed session before a work session. To discuss litigation.
Alderman Donovan?
Pardon me?
Alderman Couch, to the only closed session.
Oh, yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Huck?
Yeah.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Uzika?
Yeah.
10 is a 7.
Sure.
27.